The Monterey Peninsula Water Management District for Monday, April 19, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Yes. Director Roberson?
Here.
Director Adams?
Here.
Director Anderson?
Yeah.
Director Malik?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
Vice Chair Paul?
Here.
Chair Edwards?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Okay, thank you. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda? General Manager, Mr. Laredo?
There are none. And Joelle, if you please bring John Lear in as a panelist.
Okay. Our next item is oral communication. Anyone who wants to address the board on consent calendar, information items, closed session item, or matters now listed on the agenda may do so during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Joelle, please open up oral communication, three minutes each.
All right, so if you would like to provide public input during oral communications, please click on the raise hand feature from Zoom or dial star nine. I will identify you by your name or your last three digits of your phone number. So let me go ahead and see who would like to make public comment at this time. And Director Edwards, I do not see any members of the public who wish to make public comment at this time.
Thank you. Our next item is consent calendar. Board members, anything you'd like, Director Ralph?
I'd like to pull items four and five for brief comments.
Four and five. Anyone else on the board want to pull anything from the consent? If not, Joelle, ask the public. Do anyone want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Director Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Can I have the motion to approve items one, two, three, six, seven, eight, and nine?
They're moved. Supervisor Adams, a second.
A second.
Okay. Director Adams made the motion, and we're going to give it to Director Malik.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, sir. Okay, roll call vote, please. Now, any comments from the public? If none? Roll call vote, please.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Motion passes. Okay. Director Riley, item number four.
Item number four, I only wanted to, when I was reading the report, my attention was called to the San City performance over the past so many years. And I just wanted to make a comment that the D-SAL project itself has never, outside of the first few months, I think, and then the first year, has never performed up to expectations. I think that's maybe a problem of the design or the known knowledge at the time that it was created. It was built, it was engineered, it was designed, paid for, whatever. But the knowledge about D-SAL was limited, and the knowledge about disposal was limited. So I just want to point out that I think that CalAM is kind of a poster child for having been the first D-SAL that was approved on the entire California coast. And it's another poster child for not living up to expectations. And this is partly the design, partly what existed at the time. Maybe CalAM management, maybe they can't correct it in whatever engineering options that they have. I'm just reminded that the Department of Energy, about three years ago, approved a $100 million research project, and they placed the leadership of that project nationwide with the Berkeley Labs in our neighborhood, in the San Francisco Bay Area. And that grant was to give an intense research to engineering and design improvements for D-SAL. All I'm saying is that until that report gets made, I think we're way expecting far too much from D-SAL until we get the latest information. So I just wanted to point that out, and it's just a, it's a project in process, even though it's been completed and it's supposed to be operational. And I think there are shortcomings that can be explained by the quality of engineering and design that existed at the time. Anyway, I'm not looking for anything more, I just wanted to make that comment, and I recommend approval of item four.
And I'll give you the second on it. Let's take it out to the public, see if the public want to comment on item four.
Director Edwards, seeing no hands raised, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. And just on the second, quickly, I thought Marina Coast had the first D-SAL here on the, well, out here on the central coast. Just for argument's sake. I thought Marina Coast did, that little one, it's not running now. Okay, and CalAM was second. All right. Roll call, please.
Director Roberson?
Sorry, yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, seven to zero. Item number five, Director Ralph?
I only wanted to ask, not so much response yet, but I wanted to just put our general manager on notice for a report sometime in the future, that's kind of my request. The mitigation responsibility is pretty large, it's pretty expensive. I know there's a lot of grant money that's available, but what I want, what I'm curious about is if there's any projection, once we are off the Carmel River, or at least down to the State Water Board's 3376 acre foot take that's authorized, is there any chance that the level of, or the degree to which we provide mitigation services and projects to the Carmel River might be modified? Whether it's in, whether it's a result from the State Water Board order, I mean, once we meet, once we meet the requirements, if pumping is reduced, if the future of stability in that watershed can be predicted. Anyway, that's kind of my question, is sometime in the future, I'd like to have some sense of where we might be going over the next three, five, eight, 10 years, just looking at the mitigation responsibility that we have. Is it litigation, is it in legality issues? Does the CalAM penalty that was imposed for the overdrafting through the marine fisheries, I think it is, will that terminate at some point? I mean, I'm just curious at what the responsibility is, the financing of the future work that might be, and the prognosis of how long this might continue. Some sense of that, that's what I'm asking for.
Mr. Riley, those are all wonderful questions, and they could come back to you on some future agenda that's not really fully framed by the consent calendar for item for them.
I just wanted to raise it, thank you. And I move.
We'll probably go through water supply planning, since it's a cost of the water supply.
Okay, we have a motion to, on the second, I'll give you a second, Director Riley, so we can move on. Any other comments from the board members? Any comments from the public, Joelle?
Director Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
And Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, seven to zero, thank you. General Manager, report.
Yep. And Joelle will put that up on the screen. Let me just preface it while we're waiting, there we go. That with each additional month that we get into Pure Water Monterey injection and recovery, beginning to realize how these charts are less meaningful than they used to be. So, next slide, Joelle. Next slide. There we go. So, you know, this is compliance, and so it's actual versus target production, kind of the annual budget broken into monthly tracking. And now that Pure Water Monterey is not on this page, this is a little less meaningful than it used to be when these were the two primary sources. So the takeaway is, we are meeting, and what should happen, by the way, is your budget then begins to follow your expectations for Pure Water Monterey, and so the chart may come back to making sense. But because we're also putting in the additional wells, our production capacity at Pure Water Monterey will go up, and so the budgeting process will change. But anyway, the takeaway in the current year is meaningful, and the actual has been below target, which is a good thing. But the year-to-year comparison has almost no meaning, because we have been offsetting on a one-per-one basis withdrawals from the river under the compliance order with production from Pure Water Monterey. And so that lower right-hand corner number from last year has little meaning when compared to this year. Next slide. Here you can see, actually, a couple of things pop out. There's been no ASR recovery yet, even though we're sitting on just under 1,300 acre feet of stored or banked ASR water in the aquifer. Table 13 is directly related to rainfall, and since it's been a dry year, rainfall is off, and so table 13 withdrawals are down. Pure Water Monterey is close to target. I think what we're seeing now is pretty darn good. We had 313 acre feet recovered for company use in March, which is a little over 10 acre feet per day. I'm sorry, I've reversed that. Injected for customer use, which is a little over 10 acre feet per day, injected. And then San City D-SAL, I think Director Riley covered that column quite well during the consent discussion. So it remains under budget. Next slide. This is meaningful on a year-by-year comparison basis. What you can see in the final column in the lower corner is we're 152, I'm sorry, 254 acre feet less in demand for customer service than last year. But again, it's only halfway through the water year. The lack of rain, unless Director Anderson's prediction of a half, half an inch in a week, weekend is accurate, may mean the irrigation season starts earlier. So we'll be watching these numbers carefully to see what happens with a relatively arid spring and summer. But nevertheless, the first two slides, there is compliance. And this last slide, we still look pretty good under production for customer service. Next slide. This is rainfall. You can see the scale on the left-hand side is in inches, so if we do get the Anderson rainfall that has been predicted, you'll have approximately one-third of a normal April, which is why we haven't, you know, we haven't declared that all bets are off. The early rains of January, in effect, filled the aquifer. So the aquifer under the river has more than enough water to meet our needs. Our limitations, of course, are the CDO itself and other restrictions on groundwater. But, you know, we don't have high expectations for April, so a little bit of rainfall in April will have a big impact. Next slide. Here's the April through today gauge, the red being the cumulative totals and the blue being the daily totals. You can still see that, you know, January was the one big two-day period, and we've had very little since then. Next slide. And this is stream flow data, unimpaired stream flow. And, you know, it's a, it's also a bleak story when you look at the January, February, March outflows. And so we've had Greg James, who's one of our hydrographers, who's very familiar with all the stream gauges, has let me know that we're in the fourth driest month of the five driest ever in the past 30 years. Yeah, so the worst, the worst ever, the worst two ever were during that last drought, the 2013 through 16 drought period. So by example, the worst March was 2,050 acre feet of unimpaired stream flow, and we're at 2,398, so almost 2,400 acre feet. The next highest, the fifth highest, is just under 3,000. So these were pretty weak. You may remember, we gave you a first quarter report, and the rainfall results and the stream flow results through the end of the first quarter were already tracking with the worst ever. So the January totals did improve us a little bit, and we're still receiving, you know, some of the stream flow from January and a little bit of February rain. But generally speaking, yeah, it's within the five worst ever. While we may declare it to be a critically dry year or a dry year, once we see what the results are, we won't declare it to be a drought until we get two dry or critically dry years in a row. So even though you've seen the articles on the entire country's expectation of a mega drought across the West, we typically don't call it a drought until we've got two years' worth of data. So just keep that in mind. And that concludes this report. I do want to touch on a couple of, one other thing. And Joelle, there's that one pager. So it turns out that May is Water Awareness Month. And I want to let you know that we have two workshops. One is on composting, which is the image you see here. And the other is on garden design. The first one's May 11th, the second will be May 25th, and we'll be opening up for registration for the first one probably in the next week or so. So keep your eyes posted. We usually have pretty good turnout at these workshops. This is done in conjunction with California American Water. I noticed on some of our screens, their logo is covered up by the picture of the person who's speaking. So rest assured, they're on there. And we hope that the public has a chance to join us for this and recognizes Water Awareness Month next month. That concludes my remarks.
Okay, any questions for the General Manager? Just one quick one for me. How do we let the public know about those two workshops that you're going to be having? Are we going to go through Zoom, and are we going to go through advertisement on?
Yeah, combination. Stephanie Locke and you unmute and update us. I know we do a lot of social media, but.
Yeah, it'll be advertised both on our social media pages as well as in the newspapers. So this was just the ad proof that we saw today, and I wanted to remind Dave Stolt to let you guys know that this was coming up, and then it was Water Awareness Month.
Thank you. And our next item will be the.
Question?
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you, sorry. Is the composting webinar a new subject? Or has that been done in the past? And if it is new, does it have anything to do with the new law that's going to be in effect before too long?
Oh, I don't know that I can actually answer your question. This, we are having a company called G3, who will be doing these two workshops for us. And I'm assuming that they're up to speed on whatever the current regulations are or what the future regulations are. It is a Zoom workshop, so it will start at 5:00. I think both of them start at 5:00. And like I said, it will be in the newspapers, it will also be in various medias. And I can certainly let you know more as soon as I find out.
Thank you, and if you could send it to our office, we'll put it up on our.
Oh, sure, thank you, yeah, thanks.
Any other board questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are both webinars on composting? Did I miss the second title? Yeah. Yeah, they're not both on composting, the second one's on garden design. Oh, garden, that's right, okay. Yeah, and Mary's referring to AB 1389, which requires composting. It's going to really impact waste management, and so it's the trend coming forth, yeah.
And we are at the leading edge of it, obviously.
Of course.
All right, thank you. No other questions, General Counsel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, public, and staff. Good evening. The board did meet in a special meeting at 5:00 PM in closed session. There was no public comment beforehand. There were three items on the agenda. One item of existing litigation concerning the decision for Just Water, petition to modify CPUC decision, and two items of anticipated litigation. As to all three items, a status report was given to the board. Questions were provided by the board, and answers and general direction was provided by the board, but no specific reportable action was taken as to any item. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions to the General Counsel? No questions? Next item. Directory report including AB 1234, reports on trips, conferences, attendance, and meetings. Any board members? If not, the chair just has a couple of comments to make. And one, I want to thank the Recycle Committee of Monterey Water for moving the SCR forward. There's just one committee, we have the full board to go through, but I want to thank that committee for their vote to move this forward. The next item, I want to thank the General Manager for the outstanding, excellent letter that he put a commentary to the hur on housing. I want to, I want to really say thank you for a job well done. I wish you could turn it into a letter to send to the state. But thanks a lot. That's all I have for right now. Any other board members? If not, I want to, next item, next item will be public hearings. I'll turn it over to Bureau Manager.
Thank you. This is a hearing on an emergency ordinance related to the emergency ordinance we passed almost a year ago, related to the temporary outdoor seating limitations, or I should say elimination of limitations due to COVID, and where we stand today. And Stephanie Locke has a PowerPoint.
Thank you. Joelle, are you going to run that for me? All right. This evening, the board is considering adoption of the Urgency Ordinance Number 188. I'm not going to read this, but I will go through the presentation, and you will find out what all of this title means. Go ahead, Joelle. In summary, as you know, California's blueprint for a safer economy has required some certain businesses, primarily food service and beverage services, to conduct business outdoors, and it limits the number of patrons indoors so that they can maintain social distancing and also keep people from a lot of cross-currents. This blueprint is temporary in nature, and it has been changing frequently. And I think we continue to see things changing, and it, at this point, has not been fully figured out right now. I think the projection is for June 15th. But our governor's thinking June 15th might be the earliest that we would be able to get out of this blueprint for a safer economy. But one never knows, and we can go bouncing back and forth between the various tiers. So urgency is needed to address our current transitions, and also to be aware that we could be back in old tiers. And so the outdoor dining and being able to conduct business outdoors is very important at this time. The jurisdictions have supported this effort by shutting down parking spaces and allowing the use of sidewalks to create open-air dining areas. Ordinance Number 188, the ordinance you're considering tonight extends the district's 2020 suspension on the enforcement of outdoor seating in response to the pandemic. As Dave mentioned, we adopted an urgency ordinance May 18th of last year, and that ordinance is set to expire next month. This also responds to conflicts with the district's permanent rules. When we're addressing these items in an urgency ordinance, we're essentially suspending some of our rules so that staff doesn't have to try to enforce something that we really don't want to be doing right now. So ordinance Number 188 also, this time around, adds recognition of temporary outdoor businesses such as group two uses, including bars and tasting rooms, that were not addressed in last year's ordinance. So last year, the ordinance specifically dealt with restaurant seating. And obviously, as things have progressed over the past year, there are other group two uses that have moved outdoors. So this ordinance would allow them to continue operation outdoors for a period of one year, and then after one year, we would go back to our former regulation. And then after one year, we would go back to our former regulations. And I just put these other bulletins because it is important to know that the district actually regulates bars and some tasting rooms based on their alcoholic beverage control liquor licenses. So right now, the ABC has allowed these bars and tasting rooms to operate outdoors. But at the end of the year, we would expect them to either be returning indoors or coming to us for an amended water permit that would allow them to continue operations outside. Next. California Environmental Quality Act. The staff report has an exemption for existing facilities, and that was the recommended exemption. However, legal counsel has suggested that we change that to section 15269C, which is a statutory exemption for emergency projects. And staff will be filing a notice of exemption after adoption of this ordinance. Next. Finally, the board should adopt ordinance number 188 with urgency to address the immediate need for temporary support for outdoor seating and to address our group two bar tasting room operations so that those businesses can operate under California's blueprint for a safer economy. This ordinance, if adopted tonight, will expire April 19th of next year. And then I had to add, I really hope things are much better next year. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I have one.
Okay, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Stephanie. I just have one, and this is a provision of the proposed emergency ordinance, which is probably the same as the one that's in place now. And it has to do with, for those restaurants that add outdoor seating, one indoor seating seat shall be removed for every two.
Two outdoor seats, yes.
What was the thinking behind that ratio?
Right now, we, so if a restaurant wants to permit outdoor seating, we permit outdoor seating as half of one indoor seat. So the reasoning behind that is that people are not eating outdoors 100% of the time all year round because of weather, that kind of thing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Director Riley, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Two questions. One is, you said it expires in May, but the suggested ordinance expires and extends it to April. Is there, I don't think this is a substantive question, but I think those two dates ought to be clarified.
Yeah, the existing ordinance that was adopted last year would expire May 18th, but we're jumping the gun with this one, which will replace the old one. So this ordinance will continue what's in place right now for another year. It will expire April 19th of 2022.
April 19th, okay. And then my second question is, if COVID has kind of created a paradigm shift on how some of our local hospitality businesses operate. If this, I don't know if there's a deadline or a kind of a stop point at which we can extend an ordinance. But if the paradigm shift shows that there is a pattern of use that is beneficial to the community and to the business and so on, would we need a new ordinance to consider continuing this beyond this kind of emergency opportunity we have?
Not necessarily. We currently allow a restaurant to operate outdoors with up to 50% of the number of interior seats that they're permitted. So if a restaurant has 50 seats, they could have 25 seats outside without triggering a requirement for a water permit. And so once this is all over and done with, and if restaurants want to continue outdoor dining, as long as they're under that 50% seat count outside, then they can continue without having to get a water permit.
So just to clarify, there's a 50% increase in the number of seating seats that could be continued without, I don't know, any new regulation.
Well, yeah, it depends on what the restaurant previously did. But if a restaurant wanted to retain their outdoor seating at the same level, but completely refill their interior and the ratio didn't work. So now your exterior seats exceed 50% of your interior seats. We would deem that to be an increase in water usage, needing an allocation from the local jurisdiction and payment of a capacity fee, which would be problematic because many of the jurisdictions do not have water to allocate. So we would, you know, if that became really the, you know, fundamental request of the jurisdictions, then I think we'd have to go in and our choice is either address it through permitting, as I described, or modify the ordinance. But I think we'd have to do quite a bit of study and make some findings. It was challenging enough to come to this 50% no harm level when we first passed the outdoor seating ordinance. But what we are trying to avoid is post-COVID, going to parklets, having al fresco dining because it's so charming. Climate change may make it even more charming and exceeding the anticipated water usage that was kind of inherent in how we passed our first ordinance allowing it. So it's a wait and see.
Yeah, and I just appreciate your comment, yours and Stephanie's, because it'll, what it suggests is that there are a lot of issues in play and you're aware of the many issues in play, and that's all I really wanted to know about. So thank you.
Great.
Any other board questions?
I would just like the public to know that, well, I started getting inquiries from constituents in Pacific Grove about this ordinance as it became district staff here. I was told staff is already on it. So, and Stephanie was at work that this needed to be done. And I just wanted to thank her, thank staff, and let the public know that the district staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to that. My understanding, yeah, my understanding is Pacific Grove will vote on Wednesday whether to just extend their simple outdoor seating privileges just one year. So they're not heading down a path that's contrary to the path that we're on yet. But the three major cities who have a real interest in maybe making this a little more permanent are Carmel, Pacific Grove, and Monterey. And so we've got to, you know, we'll just track it.
Okay, Joel, let's open up to the public for comment.
So if you would like to provide public input for item number 12, please click on the raise hand feature from Zoom, or if you're calling in, dial star nine. Okay, so I do have a member of the public who wishes to make public comment at this time, Director Edwards. So let me go ahead and share my screen so that way everyone can see the timer. Can everybody see the timer?
Yes.
And I will invite Peter Mountier to make public comment. So when you're ready, Peter, you may present your comment.
Thank you, and good evening, Peter Mountier, Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce. We support a one-year extension of ordinance 26 in the form of this ordinance 188, and we appreciate the language extending it for a whole year. The two-for-one provision is appropriate, and we believe it allows restaurants the flexibility they need to get through the rest of the pandemic. I understand the concern around, you know, once restrictions are lifted entirely, then restaurants could use more water than they might have used before the pandemic because they might have had more seats than they may have used in water year 18, 19, or before that. And to that end, I spoke with some of our restaurants over the last couple of days. Every single one of them told me that they feel that while they've moved their tables outside and some of them have added some tables, they aren't using any more water than they have in the past. Additionally, most of them haven't added more seats than they had before. They just most moved their existing tables outdoors. Some have purchased additional tables that are appropriate for outdoor use. But in any case, that increase in seating doesn't necessarily correlate with an increase in seats filled, and that's why that two-for-one is a good ratio. And for a variety of reasons, there are some limits that restaurants don't want to hit. First of all, they don't want higher bills on their water. That's the last thing they want right now. Second, all of my contacts told me this, their kitchens are only so big. Even with the few restaurants that may have added new tables, they can't possibly serve 150% of their previous capacity. They don't have the kitchen capacity and they don't have the staff. The labor market's even tighter than it was before, and people are having trouble bringing staff back to the levels they had before the pandemic. So we're looking forward to a light at the end of the tunnel, but we aren't out of the woods on this yet. We could slide back into another tier. Overall, we believe our restaurants can comply with the provisions of this ordinance, and we would urge the board to adopt it. We appreciate you considering this and the work of your staff. Restaurants have been through more than they ever dreamed over the last year, and they can use as much of support as they can get while we see this thing through. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think that's it, right, Joel?
Sorry, I didn't realize I was on mute. Yeah, so there are no members of the public who wish to make public comment at this time, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Motion, second.
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Vice Chair doubts?
I'll second it.
Second by Director Anderson. Speaking on the second, anyone? Anyone? Okay, there's my comments on it. We're going into budget cycle. I think we need to look at this a little bit more. And if staff feel like we need to add somebody or how we can generate the numbers, we need to look at some of these places. And so we can go in and get those numbers, and we need to have something ready for next year. I'm looking at January. If we want to change it or not. Because some places, I think they're allowed to increase that outside seating, especially one place in Monterey. I'll mention a name, the Fish House. That's a small building, but it's a nice size tent outside. And it filled up, and there's nobody waiting. So I have an amenity there. But I noticed that building, it's small, and people standing outside now is a tent. Hey, they catching up. So we need to be ready sometime to discuss this issue a little bit further. If no other comments, roll call vote, please.
Director Robertson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Hi.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Hi.
Vice Chair Pa?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Well, I'd like to debate whether black and snapper taste better outdoors or indoors. But instead, we're going to focus on item 13, which is considering adoption of strategic planning goals. This board has been one of the most patient boards I've had the pleasure to work with. Because we, for recent history, we evaluate our strategic planning goals every two years with a little bit of focus on what we can accomplish near term and what may take a little longer term. And we did have a changeover in the board in the November 2018 election. And once they got their feet under them by the summer of 2019, they expressed a desire to move back to facilitated strategic planning. And what strategic, what facilitated means for the benefit of the public is working with a facilitator or moderator, whatever you want to call the person, an outside consultant, to really kind of spark the conversation, set kind of a hierarchy of the differences between goals and objectives and values, vision, mission, and so forth. And it's also a great opportunity to speak with your board-level colleagues openly and hopefully respectfully, and learn a little bit about each other. And usually, these are done offsite, in person. And we went out and got a proposal and hired a person, Dr. Richard Garcia of RJA Management Services. In March of 2020, that contract was signed. And we all know what happened next. COVID set in, I forget when it was, March 18th or what have you, when we went to shelter in place. And so we held out hope upon hope that we could get back together in person as a group later in the summer or sometime. And it became apparent by the end of last summer that if we were going to get anything out of it, we're going to need to do it via video conferencing, like we've been running our public meetings. Along came the next election, and we seeded, not all due to election, but due to changes with the mayor's rep and filling a vacancy. But we had four new board members. And part of the process, again, for the public is the facilitator will interview each director independently, try to listen for common themes, but give each individual the opportunity to speak independently before getting back together with the other directors. So we had, Dr. Garcia had to repeat some interviews. And then we went to schedule, and February was pretty full up, and we finally found dates that work in March. And this team of board members dedicated basically an entire day of their lives, split into two separate days, to come together and work through the process. And as an observer, I thought it went pretty well. I thought the higher level discussion was really engaging and interesting. By higher level, I mean this group decided to revisit its mission, vision and values as well as focus on goals a little more heartily than on the objectives. But then everybody weighed in, had a chance to weigh in, and many, many of you did with comments that Director Garcia was able to synthesize, and then I was able to look at. And we were collectively able to edit the document. And so what you see as exhibit 13A are the proposed strategic planning goals and objectives. And B, proposed revisions to the mission, vision and values. And my recommendation is use this one last opportunity to review, discuss, suggest edits if needed. And if not, go ahead and adopt the planning goals and objectives, as well as the revised mission, vision and values. And with that, it's open to discussion. And Dr. Garcia is on as a panelist. If you've got additional inquiries for him, he's ready to respond.
Okay, board members, any questions? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Could we just share the screen and put them up so we can all look at them at the same time? Thank you.
It'll be just a second.
I have a question. Yeah, while we're waiting, let you know, some of the suggested changes from an individual director may, for example, there may have been a suggestion to move something into goal number three or combine three and four, where one of the objectives actually ended up going to a different role, like the delivery of our services efficiently, and that kind of thing. Generally speaking, every request was heard and synthesized in.
Okay, General Manager, how you want to do this? You want to read these out for the public? Or board members, you just want to look at them?
I have a couple of suggestions.
Go ahead, Director Riley.
Well, one of my questions is your question too, is how might we proceed? I have a lot of notes on this, but I don't want to make a lot of suggestions because I think it's just kind of personal preference around language. But I have a couple of points that I would like to just suggest. And David, back to you, and maybe Dr. Garcia, just the process of going through this. Let me give you an example of what I'm talking about. There's a, I'm looking for it right now. Okay, I'm looking at goal five, F. And left it says the very last phrase, F, at least one per division this year. I think we ought to have the discretion of scheduling that however we want and not just kind of commit it to kind of some language like this. That's an example of kind of what I would prefer to have a little more discretion about how and where and when and what division, and not just say at least one per division. That's five events, COVID-dependent, that's identified this way, and I would just like to remove that. That's an example.
Which, what are we looking?
He's looking at five, five E, I think.
Five.
Five, excuse me.
Near-term objectives.
Yeah, and I'm looking at everything after the last comma. Could we just remove that? Because it commits us to five events, and I'm not sure if that's needed, and I'm not sure if that would be our preference for priorities. And I would just like to see it removed.
If I, if I may comment on that, as we discussed before, when you set objectives, one of the factors is a timeline for the objective, or it's just a statement. And any one of these objectives, if you say at least one per year, it could be two per year, but circumstances dictate that there not be any, but at least you have something to focus on with respect to a timeframe. So if you don't have any, anything to measure whether or not you're achieving it, then you really can't measure it.
I agree with that.
Okay. Let me go to goal number five as a goal itself, which are on the same page. I would like to see the last phrase, be a regional leader, be the initial statement that we make, rather than raise the profile and create trust and be. I would like be a regional leader and raise profile and instill trust. You see, this is kind of language, and then this is editing, and I don't really want to be an editor here. I just, these are my reactions.
Well, you're doing a good job.
I like that edit.
But go ahead, Vice Chair.
That's a good.
I, I like that proposed edit. I would, I would want to do it, just to put more emphasis on the most important part of that.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, I agree.
Director Riley, would you like to restate the goal, be a regional leader on water issues?
Yes, just put that phrase as the first phrase and then continue the rest of it.
Then raise this profile and instill public trust.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, and this falls within the purview of non-substantive minor modifications, even though there's some substance in it. So you can still adopt tonight, subject to that. We don't have to add the edits in the form of the motion, but we're writing them down.
Okay.
And I'm okay with the rest of it, even though I have notes all over my.
Director Riley, we did note that that happened. Actually, the challenge is incorporating everybody's comments into a document. But this is a good opportunity to make sure we captured what you wanted.
I get it, Richard. I appreciate you struggling.
And keep in mind, since you highlighted item F under goal number five, even speaking to your own city council would satisfy that need, and I know Chair Edwards does that on occasion. But you know, anecdotally, I had a previous director say, I'm not going to speak in front of the city council, that's your job, General Manager. So, I mean, you know, you have to decide what kind of presence you want. You know, I had another division director who said, everybody knows how to find me, so I don't need to go out there. So you do need to decide, you know, what level of interaction you want with your constituents, and I recognize that, and I think we we grant that, but yeah, to make it an objective, we tried to give it either an amount or a timeline or both.
Hey, Dave, if you come to my Monterey City Council meetings, then they can blame you instead of me.
I would be fine with that.
Okay, any other board questions on this? Go ahead, George.
Just my last comment. Don't forget that we're going to be evaluated against these goals, and so is the general manager. So as we implement or as we pursue these various things, don't forget that we're expecting production, we're expecting performance, and there's an evaluation process down the road. Thank you.
Director Riley, Chair, if I may comment on
Go ahead, Doctor.
Something that was not pointed out at the beginning of the meeting is that, and hopefully the General Manager will agree with me on this, is based on your ratings, my understanding, and I haven't looked at the matrix, but goal number one, goal number two, goal number three, et cetera, were your top three goals. I was just to the point of being rated against this, so those were your top priority as goals for the district. Then the remainder of them, I think four received a couple of preferences, priority, but the others did not. So as you move down from one to six, you'll find that the bottom ones were not, were not considered by the board to be as important as the top ones. Is that fair, Dave, what I'm saying?
It is, and I think we want to give a shout out to Supervisor Adams for her trick. Which she said, but if you combine these two goals into one, then I would move that up into my top three. And so we worked really hard at, you know, the game theory involved in all of this.
Okay, Director Malik.
Yes. I don't want to be wordsmithing here, but in that last revision that George made, what does it mean raise? Raise public trust. Raise it from where? Raise it from what?
It's raised district profile.
It's, where is it down the bottom?
Oh, you mean right now? What's our starting point?
And raise district profile. Where do you want to raise it from? For what?
Yeah. And without giving you an actual answer, you know, to the point when our wax wings melt in the sun or anything like that. If you don't mind, Director Malik, I thought you shared with Dr. Garcia a very compelling insight on some of the others that were, hey, these are what we should be doing all the time. Why is this specifically called out when this is what we would expect is the base case? And that could be, you know, both the financial goals and objectives, as well as the organizational efficiency and effectiveness. And I think there's a good philosophical discussion to be had there, which goes, I think, to this one, which is, you know, when you raise it from where, you know, it's, it might be easier if you're starting at rock bottom than if you're already starting in a pretty good place, and I don't think we call that out.
Can we say it, continue public trust?
Could you say enhance?
Continue rather than raise.
You mean continue to raise the district profile?
Okay, there you go.
What I understand by raising the district profile is there are still a lot of people who don't know exactly what the Water Management District does, or don't know about all that it does.
At this point, nor who we are, because there's been a lot of change on the board. And I think that it's important for the community to get to know who we as a team are.
Yeah, and you know, the district's role in regional water planning, long-term resource planning, conservation mitigation, protecting the watershed and all of that. I, there's room for, to let people know all that the district does and its role, its leadership in certain areas, its responsibilities. That's what I understand by raising the district's profile, at least in part.
I agree, and also just because of all the, what shall I say, tug of war in the public over the last 10 years. There are a lot of people who have no idea what we've done, whether it's for storage and recovery or any, the recycling thing, you know, with Pebble Beach or whatever, they don't know, and they're angry. People I know have been angry because they were turned down for putting in an extra sink or some such, and they don't understand that that's not the water districts. I mean, that's because we didn't have any new water, and there's we're not totally responsible for that. And that we're working on it. So I think they don't know who does what.
Yeah.
So I'm here, and we can leave it alone. That raise implies a certain level that's somewhat undefined, but there's not an acclamation of the majority to change the word raise, even though Softlight makes a very good point.
I would keep it as it is.
Okay.
And we will keep continuing there. Is that okay with you, Director Malik? Director Malik? Is okay, continue in there?
It's fine.
Okay, any other objections? All right, moving along. Oh, Director Riley, go ahead.
I have another, I have another question about just one phrase. I'm going to look at goal five again. I'm down at long range. Item C. Okay, item C has the phrase of choice. What does that mean? I'm suggesting strike that phrase.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could go.
Yeah.
Jim? Is that okay?
Yeah, it's okay with me. I was just kind of waiting to hear a fourth, you know, fourth agreement, but I think.
Oh, you got that fourth, it'd be me. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take that out. All right. Any other changes, Board Member C?
I wanted just to thank the board for getting as engaged as they have. You know, this can be an academic exercise, a serious exercise, a long-range planning exercise. You can, you can take whatever attitude you want, but I don't think it's always enjoyable and look forward to. But I think our board kind of engaged on this process, and Dr. Garcia, you became part of the target, but also part of the facilitator. And all of it worked, so I'm just, I'm just thanking everybody. Thank you.
Excuse me, but I thought we wanted it to remain the, so be the knowledgeable source for information on supply and demand. That implies that we would be like the leader of it, rather than just a knowledgeable source. I think we made the word the.
I like that, too.
That's good.
Don't want to mess with your words, George. Wanted to just be sure.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Item. Okay, we're going to take it out to the public, Joel.
So if you would like to provide public input for item number thirteen, please raise your hand, or if you're calling in, dial star nine. So before I invite speakers to make public comment, I'll go ahead and share my screen here. And then can everybody see the timer? So I'll go ahead and invite Susan to make public comment at this time. Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. First of all, congratulations on going through this process. I've been through a few charrettes and planning sessions in my time, and they're very difficult to do. I don't think anybody's ever completely satisfied with the final product because it is everybody, and it will always be something that's a working document. I had a comment about goal number two, pursue buyout or pursue public ownership of water distribution system. I think, of course, I totally agree with that goal, but I thought it might be better to point out right there as legally mandated by Measure J or by voter directive. It clearly states that it's a legal mandate, aside from whatever the board may personally want. It is directed legally for the board to do that. And also, I think it takes any appearance of bias away, or perhaps any kind of blowback reaction from those in the community who may be opposed to the buyout to have any kind of way to criticize that as simply the board wanting to do that. So I just thought I'd bring that up. It's up to the board how they react to that or decide to do it, but I just thought that it might be better to be more clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I would like to invite Melody Crispop to make public comment. So Melody, when you're ready, please present your public comment.
I, Melody here. So I really second what Susan just said. That's a great idea. But my main reason for commenting is to address what Softlight was saying. The whole idea of raising the district's profile had to do with, and I think I may have been the one that brought this up early on, basically raising it from pretty much obscurity. Because unless you are an architect and you're building things, or unless you go to the district to get some kind of permit, most of the community doesn't know who the Water Management District is. It's confusing to them. There's Calum, and then there's another water entity, and so many people have no idea who the Water Management District is, or they have a negative attitude about it from past boards. But that was the reason for raising the idea of the word, I think, raising your profile, just to let people know who you are and what you do. That's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, seeing no hands raised, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Dr. Garcia, General Manager, your comment. How do we turn that into something? I see Director Anderson have a hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I would agree with Susan and Melody to add that language for goal number two, as directed by the public and, you know, Measure J, however, whatever words you want to use. But I think that's a very good idea.
Okay, General Manager, how do we say this?
Yeah, I wrote down, yeah, I wrote down as directed by the voters in Measure J, but you know, voters and public are the same thing.
Joel, can you put it back on the screen and type that up so we can get it moving along?
That's okay. I'm going to steal it back from Joel and make sure the edits match my notes anyway, so we can.
Well, let's get it back up there.
Uh, we, goal, goal, goal number two.
Goal number two, okay.
Uh, Dr. Garcia, is that too long or too?
Well, my, my only comment as a facilitator on that is goals should be overarching, and it should be a long-term, whether it's Measure J, or Measure P, or whatever. Um, it's still to pursue that, so if, hopefully, Measure J will ultimately come to fruition, and you won't even need that as a goal. That's it, that's just, I, I think it's, it's much more specific, almost to the point of it being an objective. But, and I think I saw something about Measure J, just a second. But that's just a comment. I mean, that, I don't, that doesn't mean it's inappropriate. I just think the goals should be overarching and should encompass any measure or any action taken by the voters, rather than just a specific action.
Now, I think, if I may share, I think.
Go ahead, Director Clark.
Yeah, Susan and I agree with Susan and Amy completely. That, that is, is such an important, salient act that happened, uh, that it's very, very important to let everyone know that, that this board is following the direction of the people as they voted.
Okay.
I think it's super important to be in there.
Yeah, I, I agree as well.
Okay.
Okay, Joel, type it in. Thank you, you're doing good.
If you're ready for a motion, I would, would make a motion to approve um, this strategic plan as amended this evening.
I, I have one more suggested amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. One, one second, Director Clark made a motion. I'm gonna second it, so we can move it along. Okay. Director Anderson, what do you got?
I want to go to, um, six D. Um, speaking about improving our public, you know, the, the public knowledge and everything. Launch, it says a near-term objective, launch a customer satisfaction survey. Um, it would be nice if we could do that after a year, because we're, we're doing a whole lot of important things. And I think that we won't, don't wanna do that too soon. Gotta tell people who we are. And let them see what we're doing in terms of, uh, creating water and I don't know, after year, whatever, suggestion wording.
Could, could you say in calendar year 2022?
Could.
Just, rather than after a year, just.
Yeah.
Conduct, just in calendar year 2022.
That would work for me.
Okay, Board Members, how you feel about?
Um, I have a, I have a thought.
Go ahead.
A, a, as usual, why don't we just remove the word satisfaction? And just say, launch a customer survey. We can design what the characteristics are of that survey.
Good point.
Things that are going on.
Good idea.
And 2022 is fine with me, but I just think the second question is, is partly too early, but partly inappropriate.
Uh, Professor Garcia, Dr. Garcia, what do you think about that? Can we do that?
No, I, I, I think, I think, uh, that's a legitimate suggestion. And why does it have to be a satisf, customer satisfaction survey, rather than a customer survey? Depending on, you know, what transpires. All I'm saying that is, calendar year 2022 gives you a year to, to, to actually pursue that objective or implement that objective. So I, I'm okay with both of those. If, but I do, I do think it's appropriate to try to determine if, in fact, your customers, your public, does in fact know who you are.
Um, one more comment on that. I agree with that. However, when you look at what this goal is, and the first three of the near-term objectives, this one kinda sticks out as not belonging here.
That's a good point.
So why can't it be under, under five, you know, it could be G, because this is all about district profile and public trust.
Well, yeah, you just, you just took me to where I was going. So this originally came out of, uh, one of the directors' pre-interviews in, uh, Dr. Garcia's notes. And at the time, it sounded like it was much more related to delivery of services. And there's really two types of, if you wanna call them customers, there's constituents and there's customers. And it found its way into here because of the permitting and meter reading and, uh, delivery of service type, uh, customers. And what you've just expanded to is more of a, you know, a well-designed survey of constituents can tell you, you know, uh, and, and you can craft it in a way that the questions that the surveyor asks lead to, you know, do you have a positive feeling, a negative feeling? Uh, you know, and that, that's more of a constituent survey, and the two aren't different. And so it ended up here because it was fought to be related to uh, our delivery of services. But you're right, when it's just overall district profile, it would have to be crafted differently as a, you know, a constituent survey.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I wanna support the General Manager on that. It's absolutely correct in that when the comment was made to me, it really was the customer coming in and getting service and providing, you know, and, and feeling, feeling satisfied that what the service say received was adequate. That, but it, but it has expanded, yeah, by, by the issue of raising rate, uh, raising the awareness of the knowledge of the district.
Okay, um. How, how, how's that language in there you just put in there? Is that good for you, uh, Director Anderson?
Yep, that's good for me.
Okay, um, anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Director Adams, we're about to close it.
Thank you. It's, uh, goal four. Near-term objectives, D. And perhaps I missed something? But I didn't think that we were going to be able to pay down the entire Mechanics Bank loan in July and August of 2021.
You are correct, and, uh, one, if not two, directors in their edits took out, um, a portion of. And so then we grappled with, okay, conceptually, what does it mean? Pay down does mean something different than payoff. So, so we can use the word pay down and still not mean payoff, and get rid of, and get rid of the words, um, a portion of.
It, I was, I wonder, would it be too wishy-washy if we simply said, develop a plan? Because I'm fearful that if, as I read it, and I'm with, I'm one of us, it could be misleading to the public to read play, pay down. I think that many people, even though the word is exactly as you said, pay off, I think pay down still leaves one to believe, oh, wow, they're gonna pay down that loan. Like, not, not half of it down, but pay, you know, all of it down.
Right, and, and you know, we do, we have developed a plan in that you adopted a priority for end-of-the-year surplus user fee collections. And I think it was, A, focus on paying off the Mechanics Bank loan. B, pay ourselves back for funds that were not funded with the water supply charge that were used for water supply projects. And then three, was beginning to develop a plan or a fund to sunset all our portion of the water supply charge. So that's there. You also adopted in your budget, I think, Suresh is on it, he can correct me if need be, but I think $500,000 was set aside to pay down a portion of. So I think you're right, we're grappling with, should the words "a portion of" go back in? Are they harmful? Are they, do they create more clarity? I'd be fine putting in, because we already have a plan.
You've already got the plan, right.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Garcia, any comments on that?
I, I, I'm just a little confused in, are, are you suggesting that you say "plan to pay," or uh, are you dropping the "plan"?
No, no, I think.
Okay, okay, plan to pay down a portion of?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's, I just, a portion.
Sorry, to go backwards again, but actually, are we gonna plan to, or are we going to pay down a portion of the loan in July and August?
You're, good point. As a short-term objective, you're either gonna do it or you're not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pay down a portion.
Right, so.
Yeah, Director Malik is trying to speak, too. Let's.
Yeah, thank you. You're trying to get in there, you gotta speak up. Go ahead, Director Malik.
Percentage. They pay a percentage.
Pay a percentage? How that sound, Dr. Garcia?
Uh, I, I, well, I'm still stuck on the plan, plan to. Do you, do you want, do you want, do you want to delete the plan, plan to, and just say pay, pay, pay a percentage, pay a portion. You don't have to say percentage. You can just say, pay a portion of the Mechanics.
Yeah.
Bank loan, as opposed to pay down, right?
Yeah, I'm wedded to the word pay down, because it typically means principal rather than interest. And I'm not a fan, and not a fan of saying a percentage, because a percentage, while Director Malik's entirely correct, is like a portion. Then you get hung up into, well, aren't you also paying a percentage in your interest rate? What percentage are we talking about? You know, let's just keep it simple with a portion.
And simply saying pay a portion makes it sound like we haven't been paying our bills. So pay down.
See, you like, you prefer the down, pay down?
That's just me, mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Okay, that, that works.
So pay down a portion of the Mechanics Bank loans, is that what?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Anybody happy with that?
Yes.
Woo-hoo, okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, and if bad things happen, I will donate a dollar out of my pocket to pay down a portion, so that we beat this.
Is that gonna require a director's match?
And that's better, that's better than a swear jar.
Okay, Board, um.
Yeah, I think we're there.
Chair Edwards, can, may I, as the maker of the motion, uh, uh, and accept the changes that were added after the motion? And if you, as the second, agrees with that, we can add that to my motion.
To make it official, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Accept, okay? And quickly, on the second. Okay, Director Anderson, you raise your hand. Go ahead.
Quick, simple comment. I want to congratulate Dr. Garcia. I know he got a lot of input about this for coming up with this succinct, single-sentence mission. It's very clean, and I like it, and it covers everything.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And the thing, just some quick comment, comments from me. I wanna thank Dr. Garcia for getting it done for us. And General Manager for, 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 for hanging with us and, and, and working to get it scheduled. And Joel, especially, for doing all the typing in while we talk about it. He did an excellent job, and I wanna thank him for helping us get this schedule done and getting this done. So I wanna thank the whole board for the good job they've done on strategic planning. The next one would be planned probably two years from now, just to, my thoughts. It might be a, a little difference with, with another chair. But, okay, I wa, I wanna thank you all, once again, for all the good work that we've done on this, okay?
You're welcome.
For, thank you, Doctor. Um. Joel, let's do roll call vote, please.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Hi.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Hi.
Vice Chair Paul? Vice Chair Paul?
I think we might have lost her.
Yeah, I don't see her on the panel this night.
I don't neither.
Go ahead, finish your roll call.
There she is.
Okay, she's back now, that's.
That's Amy. That's me.
Go ahead.
Chair Edwards?
Approve vote.
So the motion passes.
Motion passes six oh. Okay, uh, just one more thing. Dr. Garcia, you will be working with us on the General Manager evaluation based on this plan?
That's correct. Yes, that's my understanding.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Chair Edwards, would you like to do a revote? I do see Director Paul on the attendee side.
Well, let's move her on, on our side, and, um, let's do a quick revote, so she can make sure she get credit for this.
Ah, sorry, I, there was some, this now. Um, if I, if you can just add my vote, I vote to.
Well, we, we're doing legally. That's your quick revote, Joel. Run.
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Hi.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
And direct, uh, Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, seven oh. All right, thank you, Doctor, once again. Okay, um, what's the next item, Jim?
Next item is item fourteen. Consider authorization to amend the contract for the Los Padres Dam Alternative Study. Um, Thomas Christensen of my staff will introduce this and take questions if necessary. The reason it's here as action rather than consent, even though it's been heard by the Administrative Committee, is its size. Um, the, but keep in mind that it's a reimbursable expense, so it's been brought to you because it's large. But the impact on district funding will be moderated by the reimbursement. So take it away, Thomas.
Okay, Joel, if you could bring up the presentation, that would be great. So item fourteen is to consider authorization for the General Manager to amend the contract for the Los Padres study. It's been a while since we've updated the board on this item and this study. So I wanted to, uh, add some slides here to this, um, presentations to kinda bring everybody, uh, up to date. Next slide, slide, please. So just for background, the Los Padres Dam was constructed on the Carmel River, uh, nineteen forty-eight, nineteen forty-nine. It's located at River Mile twenty-four point eight, just upstream of Kishawa. Its primary purpose is to provide storage for domestic and municipal water supply for the Monterey Peninsula and Carmel Valley area. And it, uh, plays a critical role in maintaining in-stream flow, uh, throughout the summer months and fall. And the original storage in nineteen forty-nine was two thousand seven hundred and nine acre feet. Uh, storage in twenty seventeen was estimated to be one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven acre feet. And the usable storage of this reservoir is around thirteen hundred acre feet, depending on how low you draw the reservoir down in a particular water year. Next slide. So a short history of the Los Padres Alternative Study is that the study is a series of technical reports that are seeking to answer complex questions regarding the long-term management and fate of Los Padres Reservoir. The team of stakeholders and consultants include AECOM, HDR, and Normando, who are developing the technical memos to help make decisions about Los Padres Dam. Uh, it is also being, um, observed by, for lack of a better term, a technical review committee this process, including National Marine Fisheries Service and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And CalAM and the Water District are co-managing, uh, this study. Um, AECOM, you know, originally developed, uh, the cost and scope of this study in twenty sixteen, and the contract with AECOM started in twenty seventeen. Next slide. Oh, one back. Uh, so the reason for this study is, you know, we, we have a, some aging infrastructure up on the Carmel River. You know, Los Padres is seventy-two years old, and, um, approximately one thousand one hundred and ten acre feet of storage has been lost to sedimentation. Um, the remaining capacity, uh, would fill in approximately a hundred to two hundred and ten years, depending on, you know, episodes of wildfire and, um, potential erosion events associated. depending on, you know, episodes of wildfire and potential erosion events associated with landslides and high rainfall years. Uh, Los Padres Reservoir and Dam, it creates complex issues for federally threatened steelhead, such as fish passage. There is no ladder that they can go up all by themselves. They go into a ladder and then into a trap, and then into a truck, and then over the dam. Uh, the reservoir itself can elevate water temperatures depending on where you're releasing water from the reservoir, whether from the surface or from down low. If you're releasing from the surface, uh, in the summertime, it can elevate water temperatures downstream, and it also traps spawning gravel. However, it also releases water during the summer to help maintain flows and habitat in the lower river, and it is a source of water supply for the community. Next slide. Here's just a short, quick picture of this, you know, sedimentation that's, you know, episodic and a background, um, that comes, you know, associated with natural rivers flowing and transporting sands and gravel slowly fill reservoirs. And here you can see a plume extending into, um, the upper portion of Los Padres Reservoir. Next, next slide. So this study will identify positive and negative effects associated with various alternatives for Los Padres Reservoir. Um, the current, uh, alternatives that are being looked at are no sediment management, uh, kind of what's happening right now. Dam, potential dam removal, uh, restoring the reservoir capacity by dredging or some other means, and then also storage expansion, which would possibly involve adding some capacity by, uh, placing a rubber dam on top of the existing structure. Um, it's also designed to help identify fish passage solutions for steelhead and also quantify habitat below the reservoir. Next slide. Uh, NIMPs and California Department of Fish and Wildlife have been very involved in, in this, uh, project and study. Uh, these are some of the questions that they're very interested, they're, they're curious about how effective the upstream trap is for capturing adults. They are curious about adult survival and movement through the reservoir, uh, both moving upstream and, uh, moving downstream after, um, adults have spawned. Uh, they wanna know what the smolt survival is, and a smolt is a, basically a steelhead that, um, was, you know, born in the river and then decides to go to the ocean and has gone through a process of change and is ready to go into the ocean. They wanna know how much lower, uh, river habitat would be lost if Los Padres Reservoir was not there to release summer flows, and they're wondering if, um, Los Padres was removed, could the upper area, um, offset that loss above the dam if there was no fish passage, um, barriers? Uh, they also wanna know how many smolts are produced above the dam and how does that compare to below? So there's many questions that, um, National Marine Fisheries Service has about the reservoir and how it impacts steelhead, and that's one big factor about, um, kind of determining what to do up there for fish passage and also the fate of the reservoir. Uh, next slide, please. So basically, uh, there are going to be two studies supported by these technical memos, and, um, the first one will be the Los Padres Alternative Study, which is co-managed by the district and CalAM. That's what we're talking about today with input from the Technical Review Committee. And then we believe that CalAM and NOAA will, uh, probably complete another feasibility study based on the information of this report to look at the feasibility of the removal of Los Padres Dam and pull lots of information from the technical memos and maybe continue with some of their own studies. Next slide. So where we are today is AECOM and HDR, Normando are the, the main consultants. They've produced, um, documents that talk about all the alternatives and describe those. They've talked about how to potentially manage the sediment, how to dredge sediment, where to place it. Um, HDR has created a standard operating procedure manual for the operation of Los Padres, and Normando has assessed the in-stream flow requirements for steelhead on the Carmel River, as well as taking the Water District's, um, Carmel River Basin hydrologic model flows for different, um, scenarios and put them in their Habitat Time Series to help illustrate what it means for the river, uh, based on different scenarios, um, at Los Padres Dam for steelhead. And the district's, uh, calibrated historical model and the scenarios related to this study are complete. Next slide. So the documents to be produced, uh, to finish out this study is HDR needs to complete the Steelhead Passage Alternative Study at Los Padres Reservoir, where they look at all different ways that fish can move above the dam and below, and also go downstream when they want to. Um, AECOM, this is what we're talking about today, uh, needs to finish the effects to steelhead memo. Um, and they're currently waiting for HDR's report, NIMPs field study on steelhead. And then AECOM will finish a final report, which identifies feasible alternatives and touches on the previous technical memos. And this is anticipated to be completed in June of twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. And then, so in summary, this is a request of AECOM for a additional ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, um, to finish this study. Um, because their initial scope was developed in twenty sixteen, did not anticipate, uh, this long of a study duration, and it did not anticipate all the additional technical review meetings that were required, um, for, you know, their attendance and their shepherding of the study along, as well as the incorporation of the new steelhead studies that National Marine Fisheries Service has done. Um, and so this would bring the total contract budget, um, from just over seven hundred thousand to, uh, seven hundred thousand ninety-four, nine twenty. And, uh, any questions? Uh, this, this is my final slide.
Okay, board members, any questions for staff on this item? Go ahead, Director Ralph.
Um, I have been interested in this subject, uh, this subject and this, 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 uh, study for, for a while. Um, uh, my, my, my question goes back to where, where I pulled the consent calendar question about, uh, the mitigation responsibility on the board. Uh, and, and what I, what I would like to know, and, and again, I'm not trying to get the answer tonight, but the kind of question I have is, uh, what's, what's the responsibility that the district has uh, regarding the health of the Carmel River? And I'm not doubting that we have a responsibility. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doubting that part of it. Uh, but I am questioning, how do we interpret, uh, the, 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 I don't wanna say, the, the charge that we have? And maybe that's in the formation of the district itself back, you know, thirty, forty years ago. Uh, or maybe it's in legislation, and maybe it's in self-selection priorities, I don't know. But that's kind of the question that I have about where does the, um, Carmel, because my, my problem is that I think the feds, and I'm gonna say National Marine Fisheries, but I'm not sure if that's exactly accurate, but, uh, that they're putting a lot of pressure on the district for their interests. And, uh, that may or may not be the same interest that we have as a district. So all, all I'm asking is, as we go forward, if we can kind of understand the relationship between what our responsibility is, whether it's, uh, uh, in our, in our legislation that created the district, or whether it's in choice, uh, or, or are we acting to pressure? I know that's a little different question, but, um, I think that's kind of the question I have about where we go in the future. And I know it's way too early to kind of pin down where things are. I would just like to have a little better understanding of what those forces are or legal, uh, legal, legal, uh, kind of structures that we're working with. That, that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Okay, um, Director Adams, you had your hand up, and then we'll go to Director Clark.
I do, I'd be interested in the answer to George's question as well. So, uh, my question is this, I see from, that this is, this is dealing with the dam as it relates to the natural wildlife. But I'm just wondering, who is responsible for, and have we had any kind of a look lately at like the seismic, um, condition of the dam? Are we con- are we confident that the dam is in really good physical shape?
You know, um, it's my understanding that the Division of Safety of Dams is kind of the ones that keep track of all these facilities, um, in the state of California. And I know that they actively work with CalAM whenever they want to add such, um, you know, they added a siphon last, um, summer to bring water over the dam because they had trouble releasing water from some of the old outlet works that are, got buried in the landslide. Um, and I know that, you know, Division of Safety of Dams has also talked with CalAM about the spillway. I don't know, I don't have those reports or any information on those, um, conversations that they have. We could follow up with CalAM, um, but I believe.
Yeah, let me jump in there. So after, uh, Lake Orville and their spillway problems.
Exactly.
Uh, Department of Safety of Dams was, uh, basically ordered to do a review of, um, fifty, uh, and I, I don't think they use the words at-risk dams, but, um, you know, basically to look at all the dams in California, especially the ones that, um, had needed attention, and they did look at, uh, Los Padres Dam. So we'll try to track down that full answer for you, but, um, it was one of the ones that was looked at after Lake Orville. Um, I know there's other comments that wanna be made, but I wanna address, since you echoed, uh, Director Riley's comments. Um, the short answer on why we do all this is, uh, kind of twofold. We, we started a, a five-year mitigation program back, and Thomas, not if it was the eighties or shake your head, or the seventies, but it was in the very early part of our, um, of our purview, because it was obvious that the, the river needed some work. Um, past practices were almost anti-environmentalist, if you would, uh, anti-habitat. Um, but then when the four entities sued the state and got in to the Order ninety-five-ten process, the state basically recognized the district's mitigation program as a very important part to offset the pumping from the river, and in effect made it a, uh, a contingent liability of CalAM's. They said it's working, and it needs to continue, and should the district ever decide not to continue it, then the company would have to pick up and continue the mitigation program. Um, yet we've chosen to, to maintain it, and the fact that it was our elective, uh, process was an important part of our, uh, Supreme Court victory over our user fee, um, in the past. That being said, water rights permits through time have also put into effect certain environmental requirements. Um, the, the we're and our, uh, our most recent, uh, project, the we're, uh, is part of our R R M P, which is a, uh, a permit with NIMPs for rearing, um. The ASR have certain, uh, critical riffle monitoring, and the, obviously the season of use and the, uh, in-stream flow requirements are environmental related to fish. So I've got a, a pretty good white paper that hasn't really changed much in eight years that tomorrow I will send to all of you, and it's kind of a, a, a broad history of how we got to where we are and what our obligations are. Going forward, there will be a period of monitoring that will have to occur so that we can begin to see changes in the river once, um, a permanent water supply is online. And that monitoring program will be in addition to our mitigate, mitigation program for an overlap. And, but eventually the goal is to reduce the mitigation program to what the river can support on its own based on the offset of a new water supply. But to get there, you have to have findings and, um, you know, we've got, and the allocation E I R was a, a, a water supply related environmental review that said, at any of these levels of withdrawals from the river, you're gonna need to mitigate the river. So a lot of our requirements were a direct result of SEQA. So it's been a combination of elective, uh, prescriptions to avoid problems, environmentally-directed mitigation programs, and water rights-directed mitigations for the taking of water, uh, certain times of year. So I'll get you a kind of a compendium of, of all of that that, um, you know, when you get a day at the beach, you can sit back and read it. It's not that long, but, um, but I think it's a good, good white paper.
Thank you. That sounds good. Thank you very much for that.
And if, if I could just add to the chair, um, as we approach climate change and, uh, increased, uh, storms or flooding or, um, um, kind of the clog, clogging, um, clogging this Los Padres Dam, um, w- w- we're, we're facing a little different future. So regardless of what the past has kind of dictated or determined, uh, we're still facing some choices on how we approach the future, and I, I'm, I'm just adding that as a concern I have. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Joel, let's open it up to the public and see if they have any comments. Joel, you're on mute.
So if you would like to provide public input, uh, for item number fourteen. Fourteen, uh, please, uh, raise your hand, uh, through Zoom or if you're calling in, dial star nine. Take a look here. And Director Edwards, uh, seeing there's, seeing that there's no hands raised, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Okay, board members. We have a motion, a second.
I'm willing to be, uh, authorize the general manager to amend the contract for Los Padres Dam Alternative Study.
Okay, and second by Director Adams, thank you. Okay, quickly on the second from me, um, this was on consent, was ninety-four thousand dollars. Even though the district does not have to pay that, us CalAM ratepayers, that's, that's all of us on this board, hey, we're gonna have to pay for it, and now we see where we at. It brought us up to date. And my fact is on the general manager goals that get done, coming up. So I'm glad he put the cost to it. I'm glad he put it on it. Um, staff did an outstanding report on it, on, on what's going on out there, and I hope we have everything put together, and you call those other agencies and say, we need this. We need it, and we need it now, so we can put closure. So, um, it's up to you, GM and staff. Okay, any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Director Roberson?
Um, I'm sorry, my wife, uh, said something to me. Did you call me first, Joel?
Yes, I did.
Okay, yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
You're muted here. I'm sorry, yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero, all right. What's the next item, GM?
Well, this one should be short, um, but, and we've announced it before, but for many of our newer board members, the whole IRWM or Integrated Regional Water Management planning process is somewhat new, and so I just wanted to give a flavor. In between last board meeting, this board meeting, we've actually executed our most recent implementation, uh, round one grant agreement. And so I wanted you, I wanted to at least, number one, re-announce that, um, because it's current. Number two, let you see some of those programs, and number three, um, just a reminder as to why leadership always. And number three, um, just a reminder as to why leadership always has no reward uh, regionally. Um. And so if you look at fifteen A. Uh, well, actually, if you go back to the staff note, you'll, you'll see that our job as the administrator for three projects that don't affect our system. That these are Marina Coast Water District with their Co-Avenue Recycled Water Project. Um, the Del Monte Manor Low Impact, you know, LID uh, Improvement Project Seaside. And then finally, this is in our service territory, but um, it's really the city of San City. It's their stormwater improvement project. So our role as administrator. Uh, will be to herd these project, local project managers to do their reporting, get the reporting in. Uh, and work on disposition of funds. You can see the um, uh, allocation of funds on the last page of the exhibit. So these are all relatively small scale projects. But each are, you know, each is important to its um. Uh, jurisdiction. We as a grant administrator will receive grant administration. Um, I can tell you in a, uh, in discussion with Maureen Hamilton, who manages this process for us. Uh. Our administrative reimbursement will be slightly less than what's budgeted here and those monies will just be uh, reapplied for the next round of, of grants. Um, the Co-Avenue project is completed. But the grant program allows reimbursement back to uh. You know, June of twenty twenty. Uh, Del Monte Manor is a severely disadvantaged community with a playground that floods during major rain events. So this will have a lot of uh, good social impact. Um. We had submitted more projects, um, City Monterey dropped out due to COVID-related uh, staff reductions. So the funds that we had targeted for that will be made available in round two. And we expect round two to start, you know, sometime at the end of this year. So we'll, we'll be doing this again. Um, our preference next round will be to also have a project by which we benefit as the district. But there's certainly no harm in uh, leading this process on behalf of our uh, partner agencies and local jurisdictions. So that was just a informational item for you to look at and ask questions on if you have.
Okay, any more questions? Director Anderson?
Um. Maybe I missed something, but where does this money come from? Is this California State or?
Yeah, this would be um, Proposition One, which we as voters passed statewide. Oh, it's got to be two and a half, maybe three years ago now.
Hmm.
Um, through time, there's, there, there's been Prop, Prop fifty, Prop eighty-four. And this one, Prop one, that have put money in, specific pots of money into the regional IRWM. Process. And so the state's broken up into, think of them as watersheds, but it's broken up into areas. And so we span from Santa Cruz down to Santa Barbara. As a central coast group, we include uh. Uh, a variety of, of other parties. And in this particular. Prop one funding round, all of the, the groups joined together and agreed to just split the money instead of compete with each other. And the states continued to honor that. Um, and so that's. The reason our planning area has gotten more money through this program than it ever has before because of that agreement not to compete. It's been very challenging to compete with the Paharo area because of income. Um, Santa Barbara sometimes due to size, San Luis Obispo due to size. Um, so it's been, it, it worked out pretty well for us and uh, Larry Hanson took the lead in negotiating that cost or the funding sharing agreement. Um, back when he was still uh, full-time with us. Um, and then, so you know, kudos to Larry, kudos to Maureen for running this program. It's, it's a bit of a thankless task because it's very bureaucratic.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Go ahead, Director Rau.
Um, Dave, uh, the, well, to the full board and to the public, I think this is an exec, excellent example. Of uh, district leadership on water issues. How do you pull all these people together? How do you, how do you process all the kind of minutia that has to be processed? Uh, how do you stand in the position of consolidating various interests? And uh, and, and, and being successful at getting grant money? I, I, I just think this is an excellent example and I continue to support it. My, 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 my only question, Dave, is uh, when you say Santa Cruz or Santa Barbara, does that include San Benito County or is this only coastal counties?
Uh, I do not believe it includes San Benito, but I'd have to check that because there's a piece of Santa Clara Valley. Uh, Water District that has joined with Paharo on some things and you know, that's Santa Clara County. Um, which is directly above both us and San Benito. So. Um, I'll, I'll get you the answer and email it to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Or Maureen, if you know, maybe you can.
Yeah, Maureen can, yeah.
One quick comment.
Go ahead, Director.
I agree with what, what George said. And so I'm thinking right away, and how do we simplify this and explain this to our constituents so they can say, wow, you did that? Because it's really cool. How do we? You know, pull, pull that together. It's wonderful. Quick programs.
Yeah, raise our profile.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and I'll, I'll have to look at what um, what authority we have. But you know, it's been interesting, for example, with the state revolving fund loan for Pure Water Monterey. One of their criteria for accepting the, the award, both the loan and, and grant monies. Was we had put their logo up on the, the sign at the construction entrance, right? Um. There's a lot of that, but, and so we had to do that for construction at the Steelhead Rearing Facility. And we're the only people who drive in there except for Cal AM. So you know, sometimes you're putting your, your logo out there. But you're really just patting yourself on the back in, in cases like that when you're off in the woods. But I think we can look at that because these are local projects. They do have to sign the sub-grant uh, agreements. Um. You know, it could be low cost to just ensure that the district's name is on there.
Yeah.
Um, but there's, you know, there's other ways. Locally, they're going to get, you know, whoever the local sponsor is, is going to get the lion's share of the praise. Because they put the application together, um, it went into the, the overall group. We have a group and. Um, they get ranked and then the highest ranked ones get to be submitted to the state for funding. So there's a lot of work that the local project sponsors have to do. But um. Ourselves, you know, we used to do this all by ourselves and we went out and we worked jointly with the administrator to do so, but. Um, it's still a lot of work. So yeah, we need to polish that story so that.
Yeah.
We're sharing it. Yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
Right.
Okay, if not, Joel, could you please open up to the public and see if they have any comments on this item?
Right, so if you would like to provide public input on item number fifteen, please raise your hand from Zoom or dial star nine. So let me open that up really quick. And I do see here that we have Susan, who would like to make public comment at this time. Um, before I invite her to make public comment, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And is everybody able to see uh, the timer?
Go ahead.
Okay. And Susan, uh, when you're ready, uh, please present your comment.
Thank you. Um, kudos. This is, these are great projects. I just want to say, um, I appreciate all the work that went into coordinating all of this and. I think this really is like uh, Director Riley said, a really great example of cooperative efforts regionally. Um, I'd love to see more infrastructure projects done. And I know that President Biden is pushing a huge federal program to work on infrastructure in this country. So I hope that will include our local water infrastructure as well and that um, those funding uh, options might be pursued for us. So I just want to plant that bug and just uh, hope that more money is coming to help even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, uh, seeing that there are no hands raised, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Uh, GM, could you tell us what our congressmen and our politicians are doing with this upcoming bill that's out there? A lot of people are starting to question us.
Uh, it's super brief since it's not really on the agenda, but it may be a topic for uh, later discussion. Uh, two things of note, earmarks are back. And so I've been discussing with the Ferguson Group. Where we might have a small-scale project that would uh. Satisfy the requirements for earmarking. Um, it's been a long time since, and you know, earmarking is basically. You, you get in a bill and there's a specific mention, your project and how much you're going to get. Um, unfortunately, the National Marine Fisheries Services uh, area for earmarks is mostly studies. And I'd hope to get our new weir project uh, in there. It doesn't look like it qualifies. But we're continuing to look at, at it um, for the, for small-scale uh, infrastructure that could get in with earmarks. On a broader sense is the uh, infrastructure bill, which. You know, it'll be a class.
Okay, I see Mr. Laredo is still with us, so you're about to get in trouble. Okay.
So just, just suffice to say that, you know, we spend a lot of money every year on Sacramento and Washington Health and they will be helping.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Um. Any information I don't staff reports, any board members like to be, put apple? If none. Thank you all. Thank you, public. Public is starting to get smaller, so um, um, GM, you, we got to bring, build them back up again. We're starting to lose them. Okay, if no other questions, uh, meeting adjourned and thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
My birthday for tomorrow.
Good night.
Oh, yeah. It was a good meeting. Y'all gave me a good present by making it a little shorter. Have a good one, y'all.
Have fun.